Hammond City Council Meeting is now called. To order, will you please stand for the pledge allegiance and the invocation given by Councilwoman Pollan?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, please give us the grace and judgment to make good choices tonight and to treat everyone with respect. And congratulations to all of our new candidates and for everyone who did come out and put their name out there in this last election. God bless you all.
Amen. Number one on the agenda is pledge allegiance. Number two is roll call. Roll call vote.
Markovich, here. Vasilek.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Zalinas.
Here.
Poland.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Henosup.
Here.
Higgs.
Here. Let the record reflect nine present. Number three on the agenda is presentation of the council scholarship awards. You'll be pulling names tonight if someone from the school city here. Please step to the podium.
Good evening, Councilman Higgs and members of the common council. I'm Mrs. Myrick and I am Chief Administrator for Academic Services. Some of you may already remember me from the past. I've been with the school city of Hammond for 25 years. Eighteen of those years as the principal of Morton High School. And it is really an honor and a privilege to be here this evening and to take over the reins from Ruth Miller and work with you as the liaison between the school city of Hammond and the common council in the common council scholarship program. So if you don't mind, if you would bear with me just for a few minutes here, I did have a statement prepared that I just would like to read about the scholarships just so that the people in the audience who aren't familiar with it would have a little bit of knowledge about it. The Hammond Common Council Scholarship Fund was established in 2000. The Hammond council members worked with school city of Hammond administrators and the Legacy Foundation to set up the program after the Hammond Common Council received a $300,000 endowment donation from Whitco Industries. The money was donated as part of the sale of Optimus Park to Whitco. The endowment, which is managed by the Legacy Foundation, uses only the interest to fund the scholarships. The number of scholarships may vary from year to year depending on interest rates. The council's intent is to encourage Hammond students to go to college and to reach their goals. High school seniors attending Hammond High Schools have the opportunity to receive a $1,000 scholarship using the following criteria. They must enroll in a college or university of the student's choice as a full-time student. The student must enter a two- or four-year degree program. And the student must have a minimum GPA of C or above average. The scholarship winners, there's going to be 15 drawn this evening, and the awarding of the scholarships will take place on Monday, May 23, 2011, at the council meeting. And we did determine the number of scholarships per school based upon the enrollment of the senior class and taking that number, dividing it by the number of total seniors, coming up with the percentage to determine what percentage of the total 15 would be given to each school. And we'll start out with the first school, which is Bishop Knoll. And I gave each of the council people, I gave each one of you this to show how we determined how many scholarships. And I also gave you a list of all of the students who applied this year. And I was really excited because I think this is a banner year because we've had 149 applicants. So that's up over what we've had over previous years, and I'm pretty excited about that. I think we're really trying hard to encourage our students to go on in their careers. Okay, I don't know if anybody here wants to help with the drawing, but I'd be glad to have somebody come and assist me and pull the names.
What's the first school?
The first school is Bishop Knoll.
Bishop Knoll. That would be Councilman Zalinas's district.
How many alternates?
She'll tell us. How many scholarship and how many alternates?
Okay, for Bishop Knoll, we're going to pull one scholarship winner and then we're going to pull two alternates.
Why is it only one this year?
There are only 31 students at Bishop Knoll residing in Hammond or the Whiting-Robertsdale area. Okay, the winner at Bishop Knoll this year is Paul Simkowski. Pick the two alternates.
First name was Paul?
Mm-hmm. Simkowski. The first alternate is Eileen O'Connor.
Is that Jim O'Connor's daughter?
No. And our second alternate is Yessenia Villanueva. So we have Paul Simkowski is our winner. Eileen O'Connor is our first alternate and Yessenia Villanueva is our second alternate for Bishop Knoll. Our second school will be Clark Middle High School.
Councilman Markovich. Councilman Kowinski. Can you guys give her some assistance?
I'll let you do the drawing. Oh, you won't get any trouble. I put them upside down so you can't see them anyway. Okay, we have three scholarship winners and two alternates to draw from Clark. Okay, our first winner is Daniela Mada. Daniela Mada. Our second winner is Sharisa Guerrero. Guerrero. Another winner. Our third winner is Frank Robles. Yep, our two alternates. Our first alternate is Marlin Villanueva.
Marlin is who?
Villanueva. Oops, sorry about that. And our second alternate is Flor Padilla. So we have for Clark High School, we have our winners are Daniela Mada, Sharisa Guerrero, Frank Robles. Our first alternate is Marlin Villanueva and second alternate is Flor Padilla. Okay, next we have Gavitt High School, which will be three scholarship winners also from Gavitt and two alternates. Want the last name first? Okay. I can do that. Okay, our first winner is, the last name is Stern and the first name is Abigail.
Last name is what now?
Stern. The next winner is Sickok. It's C-I-C-H-O-C-K Nathan. Okay, next we have Ackerman is the last name, Nathan Ackerman. Okay, those are our three winners. Now we'll draw the two alternate. The first alternate, the last name is Roman, Lissandra Roman. And our last alternate. The last name is Wagner, Sarah Wagner. So our scholarship winners at Gavitt are Abigail Stern, Nathan Sickok, Nathan Ackerman, and then our first alternate, Lissandra Roman, and our second alternate, Sarah Wagner. The next school will be Hammond High School. Okay, from Hammond High School, we're going to have four winners and then the two alternates. Okay, the first winner is Hernandez Francisco. The second winner is Manuel Candace Manuel. Third winner is Carrasco Juan. And our fourth scholarship winner is Simpson Darren Simpson. Okay, now we'll draw the alternates. The first alternate's last name is Rodriguez and it's Angelica. And our second alternate is Granda Clarabelle. Okay, so from Hammond High, we have our four scholarship winners are Francisco Hernandez, Candace Manuel, Juan Carrasco, and Darren Simpson. And our first alternate is Angelica Rodriguez and our second is Clarabelle Granda. And our last school is Morton High School. Okay, and we have four winners from Morton and two alternates. Our first winner is, the last name is Bone Tashana. Second winner is Brandy Nicole Brandy. Our third winner is Shabazz Kalen Shabazz. And our fourth winner is Overton Ashley Overton. Okay, our two alternates. Alternate number one is Glover Eric Glover. And our second alternate is Taylor Tiana Taylor. So our winners at Morton, our four scholarship winners are Tashana Bone, Nicole Brandy, Kalen Shabazz, and Ashley Overton. First alternate is Eric Glover and second alternate, Tiana Taylor. Thank you so much for your help with the drawing and I look forward to seeing you on May 23 with our students, our scholarship winners, and our principals. You have a good evening. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approval of claims. Approval of claims.
Mr. President, that's number four.
Reading of minutes.
I didn't hear you, Councilman.
The reading of the minutes?
Oh, boy. Reading of the minutes, I'm sorry. Number four is reading of the minute.
Mr. President?
Councilman Opinker.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minute from 4:25:11.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Opinker, second by Councilwoman Pollan, that we accept the minutes. Is there any discussion on the minute? Any discussion on the minute? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passed. Number five on the agenda is approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich.
Remove for approval of claims April 20 through May 4 for council meeting May 9, beginning with claims dated April 28 and ending with claims dated May 4. Claims number 1994 through claims number 2152, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Pollan, that we approve claims for April 20, 2011 through May 4, 2011, for council meeting scheduled May 9, 2011, starting with claim 1994 and ending in claim 2152. Is there any discussion on the claims? Any discussion on the claims? Any discussion on the claims? Roll call vote on the claims.
Markovich, yes. Vasilek.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Henosup.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes, nine effect. Zero app. Next on the agenda is number six, public hearing appropriation of $17,009, 6087 Hotel Motel Fund.
Item eight, ordinance number 1116, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance to appropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeepers Tax Fund for the Planning and Development Department.
It's a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item and this item alone may do so at this time. Please step to the podium and speak. State your name and speak clearly. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Alvin Cheeks enters block of mural. I remember at one time a portion of these dollars were spent for education, a portion was spent for the parks. In terms of advertising, just curious question, is going to be a local advertising that receives a portion of the $17,000? Do they have a breakdown to of the hotels that paid into the fund? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Anyone else wishing to speak on this item may do so at this time. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Next item on the agenda is communications. I got a communications from the Boys and Girls Club. They're having a building lives benefit, create possibilities and endless save the date for Friday, July 8, 2011. Doors open at 6:00 PM. The venue of the Horseshoe Casino, Hammond, Indiana, Dream, Believe and Achieve, the positive place for kids. Also received the correspondence during the election that I wanted to make it perfectly clear to all my constituents and all those are watching via cable, or should I say Comcast or whatever. What is this called? I think we wanted to get Comcast, but it's how they video this.
Some kind of web thing or something.
Web page, okay? That Hessville is part of my district and certainly I support the kids in Hessville as well as I do the kids in my district. And we do a number of programs in my district throughout the year, and I've always done them. So I don't know where that correspondence came from, but certainly want to make it perfectly clear that Hessville, I have two precincts in Hessville in my district. And so those kids are just as important as those that live down the street from me in my block. Is there any other communication?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Pollan?
This morning I opened the paper and I read a letter to the editor of The Times regarding the garage sale situation. And I want to make it perfectly clear that this was the reason why I voted in favor of that ordinance. I'm going to read this to you. Several of my constituents, since this article came out, called me and asked me to read this tonight at the council because this is how they felt and this is what input I got from the fourth district last summer and at the beginning of this spring. Limiting garage sales boosts quality of life in Hammond. I would like to thank the Hammond City Council for its support on limiting garage sales in the city. I moved my wife and kids from the north side of Chicago to Hammond last year. One of the first things we noticed was the same houses having garage sales week after week. Many of these homes also left items for sale under tarps during the week. It is unsightly and a quality of life issue. Councilman Chico Hinojiza says Hammond is not Hollywood or Munster, but why can't it be? Does Hammond always have to sell itself short? Hammond has great housing stock and is close to Chicago, the lake and expressways. By limiting garage sales, the city council is showing in its, it is interested in keeping and improving the quality of life in our neighborhoods. Hence, that is why I voted for that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pollan. I received correspondence from the Northwest Indiana Reinvestment Alliance. Ms. Ellis, especially for you presented spring into summer, Thursday, May 19, 2011, from 4:30 PM to 8:30 PM at the Dynasty Banquet, 4141 Cayman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana. And tickets are $35. And Save Your Home Options 2011, proudly serving Lake County, Indiana and Southern Cook County, Illinois, dated Saturday, June 18, 2011, time from 9:00 to 3:00. At Open Door Church, 7105 Holman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, 46320. On-site foreclosure counseling. Need assistance, bring the following information, most recent pay stubs, our income information, monthly household expenses, copy of your mortgage statement, correspondence of your mortgage company, written explanation of difficulties, and most recent filed income tax returns. At least two months of bank statements, helping you, helping the community. Sponsored by Northwest Indiana Reinvestment Alliance, NAACP Chicago Chapter, Gary and Hammond, Northwest Indiana Bankers, Community Council, Lake County Housing Task Force. Also, we received a correspondence from, this is a reminder that the NIRPC is holding a public hearing on their 2040 Comprehensive Regional Plan on May 9 from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Wiltmar United Methodist Church, 7320 North Cod. This is an opportunity for the public to have some input on the plan. You are encouraged to attend if you are enabled FYI. The mayor is chairman of the NIRPC. Public comments and period for open houses, you are invited. Are there any other correspondence? Any other correspondence? Our communications. Any other communications?
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
That correspondence you just talked about ended an hour ago.
Any other communication? Yeah, it ended on Tuesday. Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Number eight on the agenda is committee reports. Committee reports? Committee reports?
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali.
Council as a whole is bringing out ordinance 11-16.
Are there any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee report? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Number nine on the agenda is ordinances on third reading and final passage.
Ordinance number 11-16, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance to appropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeepers Tax Fund for the Planning and Development Department.
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali.
I'd like to bring out for third and final reading ordinance 11-16.
It's been motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kowinski, that we move a third and final reading, 11-16. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion on eleven sixteen? Any discussion? Roll call vote on eleven sixteen.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Olin.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes, nine in favor, zero out. Number ten on the agenda is introduction of ordinances. There are none tonight, so that is closed. Number eleven on the agenda is resolutions. There are none tonight, that is closed. Number twelve on the agenda is new and unfinished business. New and unfinished business? Under new and unfinished business, there's a letter from Morton High School. On behalf of the Morton High School, I'm contacting you in regards to our attendance initiative program. We research shows regular school attendance benefits only the students that are familiar with the community in which they live. Regular attendance is very important in Morton High School. Vision of being community dedicated to teaching and learning. In order for this to occur, students need to be in school. We believe that providing incentives to our students who show they are dedicated to learning will enhance more students to share in our vision. We would be glad to accept monetary donations, but we are also looking for gifts or goods, services that can be used in a drawing. Anything you can give to support our students would be welcome and appreciated. If given a monetary donation, please make checks payable to Morton High School. We will also let you know how donations are used. If you have any questions, please email J O R B Y at Hammond K twelve N U S or contact me at two-one-nine-nine-eight-nine-seven-three-one-six, extension one-seven-one-one. Thank you in advance for your donation. Jo Ellen Revie, Assistant Principal of Morton High School. Are there any other new and unfinished business? Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Yeah, I'd like to have a motion to have a letter sent to Indiana Department of Transportation to make the Hallstab plant entrance more visible with heavier lines and possible blinking lights. Hallstab is at thirty-one hundred Michigan Avenue.
Second.
There's been motion by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilman Spitali, that we send a letter in regards to making the entrance larger. Is there any discussion on the letter being sent? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays, motion passes.
Mr. President, I have a letter.
Councilman Henosa, go right ahead.
Yeah, motion to have a letter sent to Charlie Blaine to have the trees trimmed in the parkway on the east side of Kennedy Avenue from Orchard Drive to Janet Street. This is the third request.
Second.
There's been motion by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilman Spitali, that we have trees. A letter sent to Charlie Blaine to have the trees on Archer Parkway cut, and this is the third request. And including that letter, I certainly want to say fifty-seven-hundred block of lime, and if that tree should fall on lime, and somebody's going to get hurt, so I want to have that tree cut, and I also made sure that they have money to do so now, whether it's in the parkway or not, but let me, to my colleagues that may not know, you need to contact code enforcement to inspect the tree, and they, we have the right to get that tree cut down, because we did change the ordinance in regards to trees. Okay? All right. So I want to add that fifty-seven-hundred block to that.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
I would like a letter sent to engineering regarding some sidewalk replacement for six-twenty Locust Street. I'd like to request that the sidewalk in front of six-twenty Locust be replaced.
Mr. President, point of order. I believe we had a motion that needs to be seconded and.
It was second. The additional motion that you made was second.
Okay, we need to pass it?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, motion passed. Councilwoman Poland, you want some sidewalks repaired at where?
Six-twenty Locust Street.
Six-twenty Locust Street.
Yes.
Sidewalk repaired. Councilwoman Poland, just to clear that up for you, normally what happens is we get a list and submit the list, but if that's the way you want to go, it's fine with me.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I have never submitted a list per se.
Okay.
I normally just address it by letter.
Mm-hmm.
Engineering.
That's fine with me. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been motion by Councilwoman Poland, second by Councilman Spitali, that we send a letter requesting the sidewalk be replaced. Is there any discussion on the sidewalk being replaced? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays, motion passed. Received a letter back in regards to our address, I guess it was incorrect, as it relates to the Building Inspection Department. It's actually nine oh five Morris that I need to have demoed, nine oh four Morris, so I requested a letter be sent to them as it relates to nine oh five Morris and having that garage and that property demoed. I so move. There's been motion by Councilman He, second by Councilman Zalinas, that we send a letter to the Building Department as it relates to nine oh five Morris. Any discussion on the letter being sent? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, motion passed. Uh, just a point of clarity and a point of record, me and Councilwoman Poland, seven-hundred block of K, and they requested that we go half on getting that overlay this year from seven-hundred block of one-hundred-and-sixty-fifth all the way to Calumet, just a point of clarity. So Councilwoman, I did get the correspondence where we signed off on that, so hopefully we'll get that done.
Council President Higgs, I believe that could be federal. It could be a federal project possibly or state.
No.
Hereback, I did see the letter, but I did not get a response yet from engineering on saying so.
Well, we'll double check that, but I think, I think that certainly they're doing a lot of construction on one-hundred-and-sixty-fifth in my district, and we're getting a lot of stuff done, and we're going to get Euclid done, and so that's tying into that one-hundred-and-sixty-fifth project, but we definitely want to get that overlay done by the courtesy chain, which is on your side, and my side is the Amoco, and it's like a bumpy road, so we want to get that seven-hundred block even, so that when traffic goes through there, they're not shaking the houses and whatnot. Okay? Any other, uh, new and unfinished business? Any other? Council, Councilman Henosa?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to talk too much on yard sales anymore. I know it's been passed already with the ordinance eleven dash six, but just so that everybody knows, this councilman is against having yard sales week after week after week after week, day after day after day. That's why we tried to put an amendment in there to have two or three. I know Bob Markovich came up with an idea of having one weekend out of the month, where you have it certain months out of the summer. Also, the Mayor, Mayor McDermott also talked on the radio about two weeks ago that he thought there was nothing wrong with having two or three, and the council maybe should come up with another agreement. And the mayor in my precinct also told a senior citizen that it was okay to have a yard sale, and again, of course, this councilman will not send a SWAT team or the police department to raid a yard sale. This councilman has better things for the police department to do, and an example of that is about two weeks ago, we had the SWAT team from the police department in Hammond, they done three SWAT raids in Hessville in four days. Three SWAT raids in four days, they recovered six handguns, two shotguns, assault rifle, cocaine, marijuana. They done drug buys, and there was numerous arrests. Therefore, I'd like to have a motion to send a letter to Chief Brian Miller and the police department on the successful raids that they done in Hessville in the sixth district. I so move.
Second.
There's been motion by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilman Spitali, that we send a letter to the police chief in regards to the wonderful job they did with the raids and over there in his district, the sixth district. Is there any discussion on the letter? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, motion passed. New and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
I'd like a letter sent to Stan Distotny regarding the status of the one-way signage being placed behind the post office on Calumet Avenue. I did make this request through the Board of Works, and we were going to put up, I believe, a temporary, to see how it worked out, a temporary sign just to see the feasibility of it, and I just need to know what the status of that is, if that's doable or not. So I'm requesting a letter to Stan Distotny regarding the one-way signage behind Dairy Bell Post Office at one-hundred-and-seventy-first and Calumet Avenue, one-way going south.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been motion by Councilwoman Poland, second by Councilman Zalinas, that we send a letter for the one-way stop on one-hundred-and-seventy-first. Is there any discussion? In the Dairy Bell.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
For a little clarity, several residents from the fourth district have requested this because of the traffic jams with the post office on Calumet and going through the alley and depositing their letter coming around and going around the mailbox. It creates a traffic hazard, and it had been brought to my attention. It was discussed at the Board of Works several weeks ago, and I've yet to see anything on that, so.
Any other discussion as we would like to the letter? Any other?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Just something that came to my mind, going to Menards on one-hundred-and-sixty-fifth in Columbia. There's a beautiful Menards, it's going to be a successful Menards, but if Councilman Higgs can maybe take a look at the light coming out of Menards on one-hundred-and-sixty-fifth. There's times that there's a big, long line coming out of there, and there's usually, the light is usually programmed for maybe four or five cars to come out of there, and then it turns red again, so it might be something to take a look at.
Why don't you send a letter to engineering and have the light maintenance man take a look at?
Uh, like to make a motion to send a letter to the engineering department to have the light looked at on one-hundred-and-sixty-fifth coming out of Menards, to have that light so more cars can get out of there.
Wait a minute, point of order. First of all, Councilwoman Poland has something that we just was going over, and we had, we had to say yea or nay to that, and then we can move on to that one-hundred-and-sixty-fifth. All in favor of Councilwoman Poland's motion for the one-hundred-and-seventy-first Street Dairy Bell sign, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, motion passed. Now, one-hundred-and-sixty-fifth, Chico?
Yeah, motion to have a letter sent to engineering to have the light looked at on one-hundred-and-sixty-fifth coming out of Menards. The light is too short for only four or five cars to get out of there, and something to take a look at.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been motion by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we send a letter to the engineering department maintenance for lighting to see about the light and why it's not, only allowing four vehicles to move forward before it turns red again. Any other discussion on the light? Any other discussion on the light? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays, motion passed. New and unfinished business, 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 new and unfinished business. Also received a correspondence back from, actually, I sent a letter to code enforcement as it relates to the property at sixty-one twenty-five, and it was actually sixty-one-one-two Woolworths. It was actually in need of demo, so just a point of clarity to, as it relates to that code enforcement issue. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business, new and unfinished business, new unfinished business, new unfinished business is now closed. Next on the agenda is public expression. First speaker would be Ethel Hall.
Good evening. My name is Ethel Hall. I live in the ten-hundred block of Field Street. I'm here tonight to speak only to Councilman Higgs. You were elected by the third district community. You're here to serve everybody, all the people, not just people from your church, your neighborhood, the complete third district. You made a comment to me some time ago that if it's someone that you don't like on a block, you would, they would be the last people to get something done for their area. We had a double murder on my block, one door away from my home. I mentioned to you, you met with my neighbors at that time to have streetlights put in. The murder was the McClinton family. We had three separate meetings with you, Councilman Higgs. You explained to us that you had turned it over to the engineering department. As of today, nothing has been done about it. I sent a letter to the mayor prior to the election stating that we had spoken to you about that. Now, if you help everybody in the neighborhood, you live a couple of blocks away from me, why can't you help put the lights on Field Street? If those lights were installed, the McClinton family might still be alive today. You're supposed to serve everybody, the whole, complete community, not only people that you like. On my block, you stated you don't like the Mullins. Now, I guess you don't like me and my husband. I'm sixty-three years old. I have a son older than you. My goal is to watch you. From now on, there will not be no nasty attitude coming from you, no intimidation of senior citizens. I demand respect from you, just as your mom is back here, you give her respect. I expect for you to give me respect, young man. Secondly, I feel that on Election Day, I said good morning to you. You walked by me and said, there's nothing good about you. Is that the attitude that a council person should give? You have one of the most nastiest attitudes in the world, and you know what? You need to change it. You were elected by the people. We will not put up with your arrogant attitudes. Thank you, Council, for hearing me.
Uh, next speaker is Paula L. Martin.
Good evening, Council. As I've stated on numerous occasions, it is good to live in the United States of America in a country that is free, freedom of speech. I certainly realize when an elected official takes an oath of office, they swear before God and their constituents that they will uphold the Indiana State Constitution and that they will serve as all of their constituents. I guess it's all about integrity. The definition of integrity, honesty, truth, truthfulness, honor, veracity, reliability. If integrity doesn't register, certainly honor does. Honor simply meaning faithfulness, allegiance, trustworthy, dependability. Over seven hundred residents in the third district or voters said no to the candidacy of the current councilman. Perhaps it was because of his lack of communication skills, his unraveled behavior when questioned as we went through the streets of the third district. Folks like on Lewis Street, we don't see them until Election Day. Why are our sidewalks broken? Why don't we have lighting? Harrison Park residents, Miss King, we just want a little police presence. We're tired of the prostitutes. We're tired of our side view mirrors being broken every other month because of the speed drivers up and down our streets. The Hessville residents are plagued with businesses that have no sense of community. When they call their councilman, he simply says, they're businesses. What am I supposed to do? Hamlet Heights community, as Mrs. Hall has already reiterated, no streetlights after a double homicide. Eastside Community Council, a very meaningful program of young folks that pull themselves together. together by their bootstraps and develop a debate team, field trips for the youth within that community, no support from the current councilman. Developed a Maywood baseball little league, no support, no financial support, no moral support. Four Quarters for Life football camp and mentoring program, no support. For whatever reason, it's about our children, it's about representation, it's about leadership with integrity and dignity, it's about our babies seeing you as councilmen and councilwomen speak clearly and represent well. So on behalf of those seven hundred or so voters that said no to the current councilman, we will hold your feet to the pedal, we will expect you to represent us clearly with transparency, transparency and accountability with all of your finances, whether it's travel, your campaign finances, or your prom- promotional account. We expect to see you there, I am one of your constituents, and we all expect clear representation for all of the constituents. Thank you very much.
I know you're not gonna believe this, but, uh, oh, George Stoya, Robertsdale, I know you're not gonna believe this, but I really wasn't gonna say anything today until Councilman, Councilwoman, uh, Pol- uh, Poland read the letter, and it struck me that the thrust of that letter to the editor talked about the limiting of, uh, rummage sales, and my contention has been, and I think, uh, it's gonna remain that way, uh, I'm just, I just, I just, it just came to me, so I'm, I'm, I'm piecing it together, anyway, what I'm, what I'm saying is, I don't think this council has merely limited rummage sales, I think you've abolished them, and what I'm afraid of, by virtue of having subjected all rummage sales to permission from the Board of Works, hey, you may have run a, run a file of, I'm just speculating here, some Fifth Amendment issues maybe, a taking, inverse condemnation, maybe, maybe, I'm just speculating, and that's what I find very disturbing on a, not just a conceptual level, but in my gut, 'cause it is a taking. You've abolished the right for people to use their property without asking mommy or daddy vis-à-vis in the form of the Board of Works. Now, these people work for, to own their houses and fee simple, their property and fee simple, and I can understand, there's abuses, but, you know, there's no, there's other ways, and even the mayor's come out and said that the, uh, the provisions as enacted are a bit draconian, but I mean, uh, again, if you recall, uh, the last time I addressed this, I, uh, yeah, what was, how did I describe it, um, uh, anyway, I, I can't remember it right now, but, um, uh, and I wonder if, in, in so doing, that this council hasn't acted under the color of law. Yeah, it all sounds like, oh, yes, and you have your police powers, and you have your local rules, I understand all that, and I'm sure, uh, uh, Chris, Attorney Chris Cantor understands it too, but there are issues that I think, I could be wrong, maybe leave this city vulnerable to, uh, some sort of action, I believe this, I don't know what the intent was, other than, uh, Councilwoman Poland being quite vitriolic about, you know, her act, I think, you know, you know, it, it seems like it's bothering the fourth district the most, maybe, maybe, uh, Mr. Kowenski has some problems within his part of the first district, I don't know, I just thought it was just way over the top, and, I don't know, Chico, I urge you to keep up the fight, uh, my guess is, uh, they'll blow you off until the general election, and then, uh, they might do something, anyway.
Next speaker is Kathy Ha.
Give her two minutes.
Good evening, and congratulations to all the council people here. Okay, uh, Ms. Hall stated, and we're not no kin, Ms. Hall stated that Anthony don't do a lot of things, he does, on Field Street, Field Street, excuse me, they wanted the sign of Dr. Mathia, he had that put up, she had a meeting at the Ophelia Center for, um, after the McClindons or something had, um, the tragic death of them, but you can't put blame on him for their death, because he didn't have anything to do with it, Mr. McClinton wanted a block club, and Ms. Hall and them didn't wanna do it, they didn't even wanna, 'cause Mr. McClinton was watching the street, and you all live like two doors away from him, and he wanted to form, uh, like a crime little thing where each neighbor watches each other's house, and Ms. Hall, you don't live too far from him, so don't put the blame on somebody because the, they have the two boys in custody, and it's a sad situation, 'cause I think one of the boys cutted Mr. McClinton's grass, and it's just a, a sad situation, they fell through the cracks of the system, the parents weren't involved in their life. And another thing, Anthony do a lot of things, he do the three-on-three, he do the Thanksgiving baskets, the three-on-three, he gives out bikes, he has ibby vendors out of there, Anthony has did a great job for eight years. Now, yeah, I'm a friend of his, but as other people see what he have done, he have done more than the ones that was in there for twenty years, he have done a great job. Now, to me, the election is over, and we need to start trying to get along, everybody try to get along and stop attacking, because the election is over, and Councilman Higgs is the third district council, thank you.
No, you cannot, have a seat please, ma'am. Thank you. Next speaker is Carolyn Jackson.
Hey, don't disrespect my mother, do not disre- disrespect my mother.
Listen, we're doing a council meeting, folks, we're not gonna do this in here.
Good evening. I would like to say, on one hundred and sixty-fifth street, I have complained about this situation several times, this is not my first time. On one side of one hundred and sixty-fifth street by State Lane Road, you got those big yellow boulders out, so that when cars come around that corner, they won't end up in people's yards. Now, a couple of nights ago, as you know, Councilman Higgs, because you called me before the fire trucks could get there to let me know what happened, luckily, that car that flipped over, it did not hit anyone, it did not damage any property, but I'm really concerned, really concerned. I know you have probably spent most of your funds on streets and things like that, is it something that can be done on one hundred and sixty-fifth street on the north side to protect those individuals' homes, the people who are walking down the street, 'cause I don't know if you know, but a couple of months ago, another car ended up in Sean Williams' front yard, he's the gentleman who lives directly be, uh, uh, who de- who lives on the corner of, uh, Moraine and one hundred and sixty-fifth street, that's twice in not even six months. If someone had been walking down the street, it would, they wouldn't be here today, so if it's something you can work out to try to do something to prevent that situation from happening again, maybe putting something up there temporary or something, 'cause it's just getting out of control, and it hasn't even gotten warm outside yet, and God knows what'll happen as the weather gets warmer coming around that corner, people coming from wherever they are drinking and going on, you know, it's scary, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Mark.
Make a motion to go back to new and unfinished business?
Second.
It's been motion by Councilwoman, Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we go back to regular order of business. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, motion passes. Let me just say this, in my tenure as being councilman, before I became a councilman, I observed the council meetings, and one time, I came in here abruptly and conducted myself not so much as professional as I was, would have liked it, but I think I approached the councilman in the wrong way, and for that, I apologize for, but at that particular time, Clerk Golick was a councilman of the sixth district, and he screamed and let me have it so hard till I had to really think about how my approach was. And from that point on, I learned how to present my issues, my concerns, to the colleagues that were on the council, or that, and address my issues. Now, as it relates to the third district and what I do, everybody know what I do, I don't think it's no, not to downplay any of my other colleagues, but in reality, there's no, if it would, had not been for me, the back-to-school has been going on before I became a councilman, over ten years. Three-on-three, I started that about six years ago, so if we do this, it'd be the seventh year. Hessville's a part of my district, so I can sponsor kids in Hessville, in fact, we sponsor kids, me and my colleagues sponsor kids throughout the entire city on a regular basis, the Boys and Girls Club gets tons of money from the council and from the councilman, and whenever I'm called upon to step up to the plate to help my constituents, I do so. I even went so far as to help assist with burial, unheard of, that's not even part of my job, this is reality, not fa- not fiction, not something that I came up with, this is who I am as a person, and yes, I do love my church, I love my pastor, and yes, I serve my church, yes, I serve in the capacity in the choir, yes, my church is no different than New Community, my church is no different than Mount Zion, whenever they call upon Councilman Higgs, as always, Councilman Higgs steps to the plate and do what's necessary to assist my constituents, that's what it's about. During the campaign, I did not disrespect anyone, I conducted myself with the utmost respect, even though at times, it really shined me to see how people of my same ethnic group would act, totally unprofessional, at a crime watch meeting telling, in front of my parents and my family members, to kiss their bottom, totally disrespectful, that's not how you run a campaign and win, running around, putting literature that's not, doesn't even have disclaimers on it, in people's mailboxes, huh, it's uncalled for. The reality of it is, I'm gonna serve my constituents as I always have, and I'm gonna do the best possible job as I've always done, in my capacity as a precinct committee man for twenty years, as being on the board of directors for Greater Hammond Community Services for twenty years, as being a citizen and a taxpayer and a homeowner in the great city in which I love, I'm gonna continue to do what's necessary to the best of my ability, so long as God gives me the strength and no one's excluded, and maybe, and just maybe, if the neighbors would look out for one another, those incidents that happen on Fields may not happen again, we all have a responsibility to look out for one another, and I love each and every individual in my district, doesn't matter whether you're black, white, purple, or blue, everybody's included, no one's excluded, and for those nine hundred and thirty-five citizens that voted for Councilman Higgs, I thank you. I humbly thank you for your support, and again, if you have any questions or concerns, feel free to call me, as I always state in my letters, at my home, on my office. Thank you so much, I have nothing else to say, but God bless America.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich.
Since we're under new and unfinished business, I'd like to make the announcement that the Whiting is having their garage mall, garage sale Saturday, so anybody that wants to, anybody that wants to go ahead and do it, go get your permit from City Hall here, and then go pay your ten dollars at the Whiting City Hall, so you can get your name on the list, so you can be legal then, thank you.
Is there a fee, Councilman?
Sure is, it's a money maker.
That's gonna be interesting. New and unfinished business? New and unfinished business? Again, congratulations to all my colleagues, I know it was a, interesting election, but you, we have to do what's necessary for the city, and, and best of wishes to you all, and Clerk Golick, you had no opposition, but again, you're still the clerk, and you do a wonderful job. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
It's been motion by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilwoman, that we adjourn the meeting, is there any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nays.
Motion passes.